At six forty, we apologize for the lateness. Please stand for the pledge.
The public will be issued to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Troxel, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Rob Getzloff, present. Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis.
Here.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney David Osten. Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara.
Here.
Parks Superintendent John Novasich.
Here.
I T. Jan Jin.
Present.
Neese Engineering Neil Simstad.
Here.
Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. And Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel, here.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. The Water Board consists of three members, myself, Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis, and Councilman Kevin Conley, who is not here tonight. We will remove Councilman Caleb Johnson and Councilman Tom Schmidt off of the roll call for this meeting only. So at this time, the minutes of the June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four public meeting.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries two to zero. Reports, any reports, Mr. Gorman?
No reports.
Mr. Getzloff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just running. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims.
Okay.
Motion to approve claims.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries two to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Mr. Gorman, any reports?
No reports.
Okay. Robin, anything?
No.
Okay. There is no old business, so under new business, Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash three, it's a resolution recommending approval of ordinance establishing the water and sewer service areas for the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, and regulating the furnishings of water and sewer services there within. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Getzloff. This ordinance changes our sanitary, or I'm sorry, our water service area slightly. It's been a while since we have looked at this, and we had a recommendation. Other communities around the area are starting to look at their water service areas as well as their sanitary service areas. So our engineer gave us, told us that we should probably look at that and update it, which we have done, and we're hoping that you guys pass this tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure, the board.
Motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash three.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries two to zero. At this time, I'll take any business from the floor regarding waterworks, any business from the floor regarding waterworks, any business from the floor regarding waterworks. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. We'll now move into the redevelopment.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, July tenth, at approximately six forty-three P M. Roll call, roll call for redevelopment, we include all the council people for the redevelopment, so myself and Mr. Johnson will be back into the roll call for the redevelopment meeting. The first item on the agenda is the minutes from the June twelfth public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Reports, any reports, Mr. Gorman, on redevelopment?
No reports.
Staff members?
No.
Council members? Okay, we have no old business, no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? No business, this meeting is adjourned. We'll move right into the Utility Board.
I'd like to call to order the Utility Board meeting for Wednesday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-four, at six forty-six P M. The roll call remains the same as the previous meeting of the Redevelopment Commission, noting Mr. Conley is not present today. First on the agenda would be the minutes of the June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
With a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Mr. Troxel, do we have any additional claims for Utility Board meeting?
No additional claims, Madam President.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Claims are approved, four to zero. Next, we have reports. Are there any staff reports regarding the Utility Board?
No reports.
No reports. Are there any council reports regarding the Utility Board?
None.
None.
Seeing none, hearing none, we will move on. There is no old business. We do have new business. Item A, Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash ten, a resolution recommending approval of ordinances establishing the water and sewer service areas for the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, and regulating the furnishing of water and sewer service therein.
Thank you, Madam President. This is similar to the resolution that was on the Water Board for the sanitary district service area. Made a couple of changes, and this is our new boundary map that Andy has up on the screen now. Kind of hard to see, I apologize, but it's a pretty big area. It's the green, the green outline is our, and we had one, I'm sorry, we didn't zoom in on the last one for the water, but it'll be on the council one as well, the ordinance.
Thank you.
Couple of changes were made in the north for the Briar Ridge area, and a couple of changes in the south for right at the Crown Point border. It's pretty much very similar to the last one. Thank you.
Madam President, a question, Mr. Gorman. So, so we're actually increasing the territory?
We increased it to the north because Briar Ridge had a new subdivision that went in that we extended our territory for water and sewer, and we decreased it in the south, so it's almost a wash.
Madam President, I move to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash ten.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Item B, consider acceptance of a new contract between Hasi Construction Company Incorporated and the town of Shererville with new payment terms for construction of the bio-solids building at the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, Madam President. Hasi Construction bid on this job, they received the bid, contracts were signed after the last meeting, but we had a little issue with the payment terms from where we're purchasing the building from, so we negotiated with Hasi Construction as well as the manufacturer of the building, and the terms were a little bit better in our favor. So most of the stuff will be on site before any of it's paid for, so, or not any of it, but a portion of it's paid for. So this is just the same contract with the new payment terms.
Thank you. Pleasure, the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Utility Board? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Town Council meeting for Wednesday, July tenth, at approximately six forty-nine P M. The roll call stays the same as the Utility Board. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the June twelfth public meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Claims, any additional claims for the Town Council, Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Mr. President, there is one claim I'd like you guys to consider adding. It's item L, and this will be coming from various funds. This is the Motorola Solutions credit is who will go to, and for fifty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. And this is the last payment of a lease for equipment starting in two thousand seventeen. Original lease was three hundred fifty thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars, and this is for Peace Happy Equipment that was leased back then. So if we consider that with your claims, it'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Reports, we'll start to our left here. Mr. Jen from I T., any reports?
None at this time, sir.
Fire Chief Bob Patterson?
Yes, I'd just like to report for the month of June, fire department responded to three hundred eleven EMS calls, fifty-six fire calls, for a total of three hundred and sixty-seven total calls for the month of June. That's all I have.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Dave Meyer?
Nothing to report.
Deputy Chief from the, Steve McNamee?
No report.
Parks Superintendent John Novasich?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to give a thanks to the police, fire, and Public Works Department for all their assistance with the fireworks event. The rain kind of dampened the crowd a little bit, but still went off and went well, so thanks again, guys, for all your support.
Thank you, John. Our town engineer, Neil?
No reports.
Public Works, Chad?
Nothing to report.
Director of Operations, Andy Hansen?
No reports.
And Town Manager?
No reports.
Thank you. Any reports from the council?
No.
None, thank you.
No reports. At this time, we'll take public comments regarding agenda items. Is there any public comments regarding agenda items? Any public comments regarding agenda items? Okay, we'll move right into, there is no old business, we'll move right into the new business of the agenda. Item A is ordinance twenty dash ten, an ordinance established in the wastewater service area for the town of Shererville, Indiana, and regulating the furnishing of the wastewater service therein. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is related to the resolution that was on the Utility Board agenda, so basically the same, same situation. We have to have an ordinance for this as well, for this service area, sanitary service area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion and comments? No comments. Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry is approved at four to zero.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Item B is ordinance twenty-eleven, an ordinance established in the water service area for the town of Shererville and regulating the furnishing of water services therein. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Same thing. This was on the Water Works Board agenda as a resolution approving the ordinance, looking for your approval on the ordinance tonight for that same water service area.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-eleven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Item C is Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven, is a resolution authorizing the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, to enter in an agreement with the county of Lake Indiana in undertaking the community development activities, which is a community development block grant, C D B G. Welcome.
Good evening.
Name and address, please.
Tim Brown, twenty-two ninety-three North Main Street, Crown Point Government Center for the Lake County Community Economic Development Department. Every three years, we're here to do this one. In fact, I just saw David yesterday over at Winfield. I just did theirs, so we're visiting everybody. It's normal. If you have any questions, this, this actually starts September one of two thousand twenty-five, which is our fiscal year start for twenty-five, and it actually ends in August thirty-first of twenty-eight. Our fiscal year is a little bit different than the calendar years for the HUD money, but this is so you can get your black grant money to do various projects, demolitions, sidewalk stuff, park stuff. You've done it all before, so you know. Unless you have any questions. Can I pick up the signed resolution and the signed agreement tomorrow? Does that work?
If it's approved.
As long as they're, it's approved and, and signed. Yes, sir.
That'd be great, because we have to get the county commissioners to approve everything, and then it goes to HUD.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give you a call, Tim, as soon as it's, as soon as it's, as soon as it's signed, I'll give you a call.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions for Mr. Brown?
Just a little history, ladies and gentlemen. This is, we usually use the HUD grant money for park improvements. We've done, I don't know, John, most of the parks with, using this grant, so it's a great, it's a great program, and obviously we want to sign up for it again.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments, any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks for coming out. Item D is Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight, is a resolution of the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, approving a town joint interlocal cooperation agreement with the town of Highland, Lake County, Indiana, for the asphalt resurfacing of Main Street, as specified herein and all matters related thereto. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution will allow us to enter into that JICA, Joint Interlocal Cooperation Agreement with Highland, to contribute funding for paving of Main Street. Main Street, the paving will begin at Target over in Highland on Main and go west all the way to the end of the town of Highland's border. So basically, Cypress Drive and our Plum Creek subdivision, and our, our share, based on estimates, would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. President, motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Resolution, item E is Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash nine, is a resolution authorizing and approving the entry into a joint interlocal cooperation agreement for extension of the Pennsy Bike Trail between the towns of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, and Dyer, Lake County, Indiana, in two thousand twenty-four, and all matters related thereto. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Same thing. This is a resolution to enter into a JICA with, with Dyer, to extend our Pennsy Trail to their Central Park. So Pennsy Trail on two thirteenth, extended it all the way to Central Park and Dyer, and the total cost estimate on, on that job was two point eight million dollars. They applied for a grant with NERC, NERC committed one point seven million dollars, leaving about a little over a million dollars for Dyer and Shererville to split, and our project is fifty percent, and their project is fifty percent. It's almost the halfway point, so worked out well. So our share would be about five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars when this does go in, which is a few years away, but it's in the works.
And that would tremendously help our Briar Cove subdivision as far as getting to the bike trail?
Yeah, we're trying to figure a way to tie them in. We might have to buy some easements, but we'll get it in.
Okay, very good.
Motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? No further comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Item F is considered a continuation of professional services agreement between the town of Shererville and Puglia and Cork LLC, which is Reardon Consulting Services for Phase Two of the Illiana Speedway redevelopment project. Mr. Reardon is here tonight. We'll go ahead and step up, Pat, and we'll.
Yeah, I'll just give a brief description, Mr. Schmidt. They're currently finishing up, R C F, Reardon Consulting is finishing up Phase One of the Illiana Speedway redevelopment project, and they're close to starting Phase Two upon approval from this council. It's my recommendation at this time to continue with Reardon Consultants to administer Phase Two of this project, and of course, Mr. Reardon's here tonight to go through a presentation of what's been done in Phase One and what is to be done in Phase Two. Go ahead, Pat.
Thank you, and thank you, Town Council members. It's our pleasure to be here tonight. Pat Reardon, twenty-seven twelve Sunny Brook Court, Shererville, Indiana. First page is self-explanatory. In, in the second page gives the overview of the project. In, in March of twenty-four, we were hired by the town to provide professional services to lead the redevelopment efforts, along with the council, professional staff, really the entire town of the former Illiana Motor Speedway property. Based on the magnitude of the development efforts, the scope of services was broken down into two phases. Phase One, pre-design; Phase Two, design phase. Following is an executive summary report of Phase One, pre-design, and the extensive progress that has been completed to date. Phase One overview, goals and objectives. Phase One consisted of various tasks that centered around conducting the essential level of due diligence that is required for this redevelopment project. The overall goal of Phase One, to fully understand the true redevelopment potential of the former Illiana Motor Speedway while identifying and mitigating any potential obstacles that might negatively impact the future project. This was achieved by the following series of project milestones, understanding the historical content, conducting various internal and external stakeholder meetings, establishing a project management, pardon me, project management office for the duration of the project, and for preparation to engage qualified design firms to lead Phase Two. Continuing on, Phase One milestones, understanding the historical content. As I think every council member knows and staff, there's, there's a ream, there's a, there's a wealth of historical data associated with this project. So we meticulously reviewed the data ranging from the town's purchase of the property through the, the May twenty-three Illiana joint study session with, with the park board. The dates are referenced, there's various R F Ps and R F Qs that were issued there. We, we understand proposed, suggested development plans and strategies were put forward. Site conditions were discussed. In, in that pack of information is the phase, existing Phase One environmental audit that was done, I believe, in, in the, the mid-two fourteen era for a different intended use. Survey, the altar survey, which is very helpful here, was, was done at the time of the purchase, and then the external, internal surveys with community outreach efforts, public surveys and public meetings and so forth. The Phase One project milestone, conducting internal, external stakeholder meetings. Those milestones were achieved by the, the many in-depth interviews, meetings, and engagements with a variety of internal, external stakeholders as, as identified by the staff. This is delineated in the agreement. Stakeholders include, and I'm not going to necessarily read all of them, Town Council, of course, the professional staff, park board, park staff, Mr. Troxel, clerk treasurer, and, and other suggested entities that have a vested interest in the project, and several are listed there, the Lake County, Lakes, pardon me, Lake Central Buccaneers, formerly the Triton Raiders, Shererville Soccer Club, and then, of course, the Shererville Baseball Club, various municipal offices and entities. We referenced special site visit with Mr. Zany, who has a lot of familiarity with the property. Again, continuing on, Phase One project milestone, establishment of this project management office. This was achieved through, by, following the redevelopment process. This includes the engagement and hiring of subject matter experts to assist, pardon me, assist in Phase One for soil blowing and determination of the, the quality of the soil. That's Advanced Engineering Services, A E S. For environmental, that would be Americo Inc., as assisted by Mesh Environmental LLC. And lastly, for wetland mitigation, to determine exactly what kind of wetland we have there in the northwest corner of the property, Soil Solutions. Then continuation of very comfortable established practice of meetings with staff, and I, I would imagine as we continue on and ramp into Phase Two, there'll be more, there'll be more meetings. Milestone, preparation to engage qualified design firms. This project milestone was achieved by the following, creation of project description and various materials to generate interest in Phase Two, design phase of the, of gathering S O Qs from numerous qualified design firms, landscape architects, master plan, land use firms, and engineering firms who have been able to, to deliver complex projects similar in size and scale, viewing these firms, and considering firms to join the project team throughout Phase Two based on the request for qualifications results. That document was, was provided to town administration. We had some dialogue today. It'll be refined, and we expect that to be issued in the, in the near future. And then, the last page, we talk about Phase Two overview, and the goals and objectives. Straightforward, again, reflective and/or what's found in the, in the agreement, and we expect in, in, in the coming weeks to be back, finish the interviews in tandem with the town, and, and be before you for action and approval at the next meeting. I'll answer any questions that the council might have.
Any questions for Mr. Reardon?
I'm fine, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I looked over all of your items, and it looks like you're, by, by the end of this month, you'll have every item that was in our contract on Phase One to get ready to move into Phase Two.
Correct.
So, thank you for your commitment and, and dedication that you've put to it.
Thank you. We look forward to continuing, working with the town, and, and bringing this very exciting project to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Yet the line item is item.
Item F, consider continuation of professional service agreement between the town of Shererville, Puglia and Cork LLC, Reardon Consulting services, services for Phase Two of the Illiana Speedway redevelopment project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Nay.
Nay? Motion carries three, one. Thank you. Item G is consider approval to purchase property located at eight fifty-four Kennedy Item G is consider approval to purchase property located at 854 Kennedy Avenue, Shererville, Indiana, from William Walters Industrial Properties in the amount of $46,567, and to authorize the town manager, director of operations, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize the execution of these documents. This has to do with our Kennedy Avenue improvement project. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, this is the right-of-way acquisition for Kennedy Avenue, Phase Two. It's parcel 15. It's 824 Kennedy Avenue. The amount is based on the appraisal and some extra compensation for his paving that was recently done, as well as reorientation of his parking lot after Kennedy Avenue goes through.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the purchased property located at 852 Kennedy Avenue, Shererville, Indiana, from William Walters Industrial Properties.
I'll second, but it was 854 Kennedy Avenue.
I'm sorry, did I read that wrong? Yeah, I did, sorry. In the amount of $46,567.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Item H is consider the approval of a advance of $38,808.74 to Cover Right Incorporated for material deposit of flooring for the remodeling of the police department. Mr. Hanson?
This prepayment amount will be for acquiring the flooring materials for the police department renovation. Since this is a rather large sum of money, we wanted to ensure you were okay with moving forward with the prepayment amount. This will be for the materials only.
And Mr. Hanson, will they be doing the work also?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Point of discussion, Mr. Hanson, the materials that we're paying for, are they going to be delivered to the police department so we know that they're ours?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Item I is consider acceptance of a change order number one from Hassi Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $25,250 for the Inverness Lane Storm Sewer Project that was done out in Briar Ridge subdivision. Mr. Gorman?
I'm going to defer to our engineer, Mr. Simstead.
Mr. Simstead.
Thank you, Jim. Tom, this is for two concrete headwalls at each end of that project that you had mentioned. There was unforeseen circumstances regarding those headwalls as they were not poured as we believed that they were, and what we found is that there was material missing from underneath the flared end section, so this work is for both of those headwalls at each end of the project in Inverness.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Neil. Item J is consider approval of pay request number five in the amount of $62,300 to Hassi Construction Company for the Inverness Lane Storm Sewer Project. Mr. Simstead?
Similar to your last item, this is a pay request number five for that Inverness Lane Storm Sewer Project. We are holding retainage in the amount of $67,788.75, and this current payment request is $62,300.0. The project is substantially complete. We are awaiting restoration and shop drawings of the record drawings for the ASBills to be submitted and reviewed between our office with town staff.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
One question. This pay request includes the change order that was item I?
It does.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Item K is consider acceptance of a new contract between Hassi Construction Company Incorporated and the Town of Shererville with new payment terms for construction of the bio solids building at the wastewater treatment plant. This came from the utility board.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, it's the same agenda item, basically.
With that being said, motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Item L, consider approval of pay request number one in the amount of $29,094.25 to Hassi Construction Company Incorporated for the bio solids building project at the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Gorman?
This is pay request number one for that project. It's going to cover engineering to move the project forward so the new bio solids building can be engineered. So this is pay request number one.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Item M is consider acceptance of conveyance of property, town hall, police station, and court from the Building Corporation to the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, and to authorize the town manager, director of operation, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize the execution of these documents. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, when town hall, the PD, and the court building were built, we formed a building corporation and took out a bond that was a long-term bond, and now that bond is paid for, both buildings are paid for. So the property is still in the building corp's name, so we wanted to transfer it to the Town of Shererville name and have it be the town's property, not the building corp's property. And then if any, Mr. Ashen has anything to add, or Mr. Troxell, that's, it was a 20-year endeavor, and now it's paid off.
This particular item has a procedural requirement to it, and that is that the board of directors of the Building Corporation need to meet and need to actually authorize the conveyance of the two parcels back to town government. That will happen with a meeting that will be called in conformance of law, and there will be a resolution authorizing and directing that to occur, that act of transfer. And upon the receipt of that resolution from the Building Corporation Board, the acceptance you might consider tonight can be executed and recorded so that that transfer gets made.
So we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit. Board of Directors needs to act first, really?
They do. They do.
I say we defer it, then, and let's see if they're going to act.
I'll second that deferred.
Mr. Gorman, do you have a meeting scheduled with the Building Corp?
I do not, but they are aware that we want to do this, the board members. I will get that scheduled ASAP.
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion to defer, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero to defer. Item N is consider variance of use to allow two drive-through lanes associated with the institution, the Bank of America. It's a border zoning case 24-6-7. The petitioner is Allegro Civil Engineers with Lauren Marshall. The location is 341 Indianapolis Boulevard. It came with border zoning appeals favorable recognition of four to zero. Good evening.
Good evening. Yep, so I'm Lauren. I'm with Allegro Civil Engineers. I'm the planning technician. We are the civil engineering firm that'll be doing this project, along with IA, the interior architect. This is the renderings thus far. There will be two proposed drive-throughs facing away from Indianapolis Boulevard. They'll be tucked behind the building. You can kind of see it. The little corner picture is a little bit different from what we're actually proposing. It's going to be on the other side. Yeah. If you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the board?
None here.
No.
And this is located on 41 in between...
The Chick-fil-A and the Steakhouse, the empty lot that's between them.
Thank you.
Looks good to me.
Any comments from staff?
Nope. Just looking for approval of the two drive-throughs from the BZA meeting.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I think we need to include the findings of fact from the BZA into our motion.
I'll include that in my motion.
Thank you.
We have a motion, and we have a second. An updated motion with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Item O is consider acceptance of donations for $1,040.29. Mr. Troxell, would you have the pleasure to read those?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. These donations were accepted through the month of June. We have donation fund to the town hall offices. Designer Desserts donated 27 cupcakes. They were in-kind. The value of that was $100. Donut NV, 36 mini donuts were in-kind, donation of value of $22. And Jerome Sim, Four Square Construction donated 12 donuts, in-kind value is $15.99. So total town hall office in-kind donations were $147.99. Donation Fund Animal Control, Jackie Frost donated $15. Shererville Animal Control donated $35. And total Shererville Animal Control dollars were $520. I don't know if that's correct, that the Shererville Animal Control donated $35, but I will verify that. Multiple anonymous donors in-kind donations were $299. So total animal control monetary donations were 570. In-kind animal control donations were $299 for total animal control donations of $869. Donation Fund Canine, Simo Kulik donated $50. GRC Wireless donated $23.30. And Donna Smith donated $50 for total canine donations of $123.30. Donation Fund Fire Equipment Fund, Debbie Rahal donated $100 for a total of $100 to the fire equipment donation fund. And to the Fire Department, Eckhart America, $100 gift card to Dairy Queen was in-kind for $100. Total in-kind donations for the month were $546.99. Total monetary donations, $793.30 for a total donations for the month of June, $1,340.29.
Motion to approve donations?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. At this time, we'll take business from the floor. Any business from the floor?
Jeff Minard, 1279 Poppy Field. I just want to thank you for approving the PNC extension. Trail connectivity is one of those things that's dear to my heart. I'm glad to see that. I'm glad to see Barre Cove was included in that because they are one of those communities. We have many of them that have no safe access for bikes or walking to their trails. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other business from the floor?
Good evening. Kevin Dean, 1905, Sir Richard Road. I want to thank the Public Works Department for their prompt response. I had a tree on my property come down, part of it. I was able to parse it out and get it out to the street, and I was very happy to see how quickly the Town of Shererville was able to come and remove those pieces from in front of my property. I do have concerns on the Iliana Motor Speedway project that was discussed today. Back in March, I believe, there may have been a number of like $90,000 or $95,000 being funded to pay for this gentleman's work that he was talking about today. I didn't hear any mention on finances. I don't know if that you, if that fund is going to be increased. I was rather surprised that this was done in March, and it took until July to get a response on Phase One. I'm just wondering how much longer it's going to take to start to implement Phase Two. Second item, last week, I understand that there was a pretty serious water main break in the area. Some people were out of water. My understanding is that this is the second time this has happened in the last year. I used to live in Cal City. They had serious water main breaks. The infrastructure was old, and my understanding is Cal City was spending more on repairing the water main breaks. If they'd have started replacing them instead at the beginning, they probably would have had a lot more money. From what I've heard, there may be some funds here in Shererville available for replacing some of this infrastructure. I'd hate to see Shererville start to have to spend a lot of money doing emergency repairs when they could be looking to replace some of the aging infrastructure. I have no idea how old these water mains are, but I know all infrastructure has some time limits on their longevity and usefulness. My final item, I live in the, on Sir Richard Road, I have to turn in to Robin Hood Boulevard, and this traffic light there, I discussed this earlier with Mr. Mondorf, I just want to get it on the record, that we need to change the way the light turning onto Robin Hood Boulevard when you're going west on Route 30. The light goes green at the beginning for the left turn, and there's a lot of traffic on Route 30. You can't get to the left turn lane, and by the time you get up there, you have to wait for the light to finally turn red. Everybody on Robin Hood Boulevard and coming out of the shopping center traffic, and then you finally get to turn left. They need, I understand they don't want to change the timing on the lights, but change that light from having a left turn at the beginning to a left turn at the end, so that is the traffic goes through, especially during busy times, the people who want to get in the left lane can get to it, and that's... Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Smith?
I'd like to answer that gentleman's last concern on that light. We did have, I mean, because that is by the state, it has to be put in for a recommendation from the state. It has been turned down twice already. And, you know, I'm right with you because I live in that same subdivision, so I know what it means to wait so long, but the last two times we put in the request, the state did deny it.
I will say this on that light, you may want to let the state know or do a... People are turning into the shopping center, doing a U-turn right there so that they don't have to wait for the light.
I've seen that.
They're also going up to, I believe it's Kennedy, and pulling a U-turn, which is not, that's got to be a lot, pulling a U-turn where there's no regulation, it's got to be a lot more dangerous than trying to just change that light from the turn signal from the beginning to the end. The only thing I could see the state having a problem with is that if you let the cars come up and get into the left turn lane, there may not be a long enough ramp for the people to all get there to turn left. There's an awful lot of traffic that turns left at that light, that's all.
Jim, do you recall why it was denied when the state denied that, or Andy?
I do not.
Okay.
Andy doesn't either.
Okay, maybe look in it again, please, and see what we can do.
Yep.
Maybe something's changed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other business from the floor? Any other business from the floor? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.